Meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Shall we take roll?
Commissioner McCombs. Commissioner Graff. Commissioner McKenzie.
Here.
Commissioner Stoman.
Here.
Commissioner Juretsky. Commissioner Martinin.
Okay, thank you. We appear to have a quorum. Our next item on the agenda is identified as an executive session, approximately 20 minutes, during which time the commission will replayer to a meeting room, meet with the city attorney to discuss some legal issues that is not a subject of tonight's hearing, and no decisions will be made during that meeting. Thank you very much. We'll be back hopefully in 20 minutes. Thank you. Okay, for the record, the executive session is running over time. I wanted to let everybody know that we're expecting to spend another 10 or 15 minutes, and we'll come back as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you everybody for your patience. Just to recap, we met in executive session pursuant to RCW 42-30-110, Section 1I, for to discuss potential litigation, met for 30 minutes and no action was taken. We will now resume our normal hearing. Let's see, do we have, did everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Are there any additions or comments? None being heard, those who are approved? Do we have any new correspondence? None, okay. And no new business, I understand? So we're moving on to continuation of the open record public hearing and decision for shoreline substantial development permit, SDP 20230002, Port of Anacortes, Second Street and Curtis Wharf. Ms. Pollard, do you have a presentation?
Hello Chair, Commissioners, yes, I will be presenting an overview of the applicant's application and clarifying some changes from the hearing that we had a few weeks ago. All of this is in the packet agenda, exhibits, I think, 1 through 21. And so just to clarify again, this is a continuation of the public hearing for a shoreline substantial development permit. We have here highlighted the project area. We're at the end of Second Street, west of O Avenue. The Port of Anacortes is the applicant and the adjacent property owner. Subject property is also within the shoreline substantial development area. The environmental designation here is urban marine and the zoning designation is manufacturing and shipping. For the proposal overview, the applicant provided clarification for the provisions of a security fence and gate, a resurfacing project and stormwater improvements. The bullet points here point out that the overall project will include excavation of existing gravel surface and base materials, backfilling and compaction of clean imported fill and base course materials, installation of upgraded stormwater conveyances and best management practice facilities, installation and construction of approximately 18,500 square feet of new asphalt, four inches in depth, and the installation of a new rolling access gate and additional length of chain link security fencing. So if you can see my mouse, this area at the intersection of O Avenue and Second Street is where their proposed rolling gate would be. And then at the end of Second Street, the new section of fencing will connect to existing fencing along the Curtis Wharf access and connect to their lot to the south. This, the location of these fences and gates also are part of their plan to utilize Second Street, and that is in that use agreement that was mentioned as exhibit, and we'll go into more detail throughout this presentation. So the review process, the shoreline substantial development permits for projects valued less than $1 million or on a site under three acres is a type III review process. The mandatory pre-application meeting was held in January. The port then had the mandatory pre-application neighborhood meeting in March. The shoreline substantial development permit was submitted in February and deemed complete on March 10th. We did the combined notice of application and public hearing in April. Public comment period ended May 11th and we did not receive any public comments. May 24th was the original public hearing and we are now today continuing that process. So a little background here, a right-of-way use agreement between the City of Anacortes and the Port of Anacortes for the portion of Second Street right-of-way from the west line of O Avenue to the shoreline was signed on February 16th of last year. Per the recorded document, this agreement contains the entire understanding between the parties with respect to the subject matter and supersedes all, supersedes and replaces all written and oral agreements previously made or existing with respect to the subject matter thereof. And that's in the actual document itself. Within the document, there's also clarifying language that the port is responsible for all necessary permits, licenses, certifications, or approvals required by applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations necessary to use the Second Street right-of-way. And so that is, in a sense, the other part of the port's intention of the use of Second Street is now getting this construction permit for the improvements that were previously described. So the use agreement is not development per the shoreline master program, and now we have what is defined as development. And so we are looking at the SMP at this phase for their plan. And all the requirements of the shoreline master plan that come with that. So the shoreline master program is a comprehensive use plan that emphasizes protecting the shoreline environment through management of uses. The purposes of the master program are to carry out the responsibilities imposed on the City of Anacortes by the Washington State Shoreline Management Act, to promote uses and development of the Anacortes shoreline consistent with the Anacortes comprehensive plan while protecting and restoring environmental resources, and to promote public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a guide and regulation for the future development of the shoreline resources of the City of Anacortes. The shoreline master program regulates all development within shoreline jurisdiction. In general, shoreline substantial development permit is required to be obtained for development within the shoreline area when the total cost or fair market value exceeds $8,504 for this calendar year, or any development that materially interferes with the normal public use of the water or shorelines of the state. There are some highlights here of chapters of the shoreline master program. Chapter 4 contains goals that form the foundation of the shoreline master program and apply to all areas of Anacortes shoreline jurisdiction regardless of the designated shoreline environment that it's located in. The state requires cities to adopt goals or elements to guide and support major shoreline management issues. In chapter 4, you can see some of these elements are dealing with economic development, circulation, public access, recreation, conservation, restoration, historic culture, and so on. In chapter 5, the shoreline master program contains the shoreline environmental designations, which is the shoreline version of zones, and the associated policies and regulations for those specific designations. Management policies are an integral part of the environment designations and are used for determining uses and activities that can be permitted in each environment. Specific development regulations specify how and where permitted development can take place within each shoreline environment. The staff report outlined that the port's proposed project is all within the permitted uses of its shoreline environment zone. And that is what we can see here in this table. So we have the adjacent uses, clearly industrial import facilities, the transportation facilities, so the road improvements that also include the stormwater drain improvements, and the fill required to build the roads, all of which are permitted in the urban maritime shoreline Chapter 6 of the SMP deals with environmental protections. And I realize that my image here is still not showing up, but it was just a pretty picture. It wasn't anything about the project specifically. But the environmental protection regulations ensure that no net loss of ecological function happens through these processes, and if some are unavoidable, that there are mitigation elements to apply. It also deals with critical areas that are unique to the SMP and are adopted into the SMP and not separate from the city's municipal code. There are no concerns on this project that any environmental impacts are happening. The proposed work is all within existing disturbed area. There's no expansion of the road width into the shoreline area, and so they satisfy the requirements of this chapter. Now we have chapter 7, shoreline public access. The shoreline public access is the physical ability of the general public to reach and touch the water's edge, or the ability to have a view of the water and the shoreline from upland locations. There are a variety of types of public access, including docks, piers, boat launches, pathways, trails, so on and so forth. And an important goal of the shoreline management act is to protect and enhance public access to the state's shorelines. This chapter of the SMP contains development regulations that address the port's proposal to secure the site with the proposed gate and additional chain link fencing. A few of the most relevant regulations were included in the staff report, and if we'd like to go over those, we can go over those in more detail. But again, the SMP emphasizes the importance of street ends providing, street ends that abut shoreline provide public access to communities. And if a proposal or development, public entity were to propose cutting off public access to a shoreline by the end of a street, there are specific alternative plans that would have to be presented for that to be acceptable. So, I guess maybe pausing at this point because this slide addresses the port's request to modify some language in the conditions that you found in the staff report. And then the following slides are the proposed revised conditions from staff. I realize there might be questions regarding information in the staff report or the exhibits. You might also have questions for the port. And so maybe before we get into the details of the actual proposed conditions, we, you know, open the public hearing to the public and discuss the project in more detail, and then we can maybe move on to conditions? Or, I mean, I will do whatever the commissioners prefer.
Commissioners have any thoughts on that? So we have had a public hearing held over today. We can reopen it now for comments if there are any. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody online who has any comments or to make regarding this proposal?
There are folks online, but no one has raised their hand.
Okay. No comments, no commentators being in evidence, we will close the public hearing and continue on with our fact-finding presentations by the city and the port prior to our further discussion.
I do have loaded, if we want to go over in more detail, staff report or any of the exhibits, including conditions, but at this point, I think we're open for questions, clarifying items, anything that staff can better articulate, or that the port can clarify regarding their project.
Ms. Pollard?
I just have a quick question about the intersection of N Street, excuse me, of O and Second. On your map, are the gates on the south side? Let's see, no. Let's see, no, that would be west, on the west side of Second Street, but it looked like the proposal was across the intersection, just curiosity.
Sure, I think I can clarify that. The dark area that you see that crosses O Avenue to the east side of that intersection is part of their repaving plan, but the gate, as you pointed out, is on the west side of O Avenue in the dark lined area here that I hope my mouse is able to see and point it out. So the overall project does cross the intersection, that's the part of the paving, yes.
So just to make sure I understand, the clarification is that the actual street use area begins on the west side of that intersection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I think we're at the point now where we need to get into the details of the proposals here.
Okay.
Can you perhaps highlight what's changed from the last meeting we held?
I think if it's okay with the commissioners, the port would like to say a few things.
Please do.
Hello? We're good to go? Hear me? Great. Hey, guys, I'm Kevin Anderson. I work for the city of Anacortes. Just a couple of comments about that. You had a question about stuff in the intersection. That work is proposed to be done, sort of, to clean up the intersection a little bit, and it'll be paid for, from my understanding with the city, from the city, with some sort of agreement to take care of that. The project itself is mostly about just paving the last stretch of gravel in downtown Anacortes. It's really challenging for the commercial vehicles and industrial vehicles to get access. It's a hot hole farm that frequently needs gravel replenishment and grading. It's not compatible with the existing volumes of traffic, both vehicular and also, you know, things like fork trucks that go back and forth across that little patch of...
Let me interrupt you for a minute. Could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Not, not...
I want to make sure everybody online can hear this well, too.
Cool. Everyone hear me now? All right. I'll try again. Do you want me to restart? Okay. So basically, the paving, the idea behind the paving is to improve the surface so that the existing activities can continue there and to facilitate any future activities, which, right now, we don't know what that looks like. It's also a way to improve stormwater. That stretch is gravel. There's a high turbidity runoff from it, it's an erosable surface. There isn't much in the way of stormwater infrastructure. This project would install new stormwater infrastructure, including treatment, before it connects to the city's stormwater system. And finally, with the provision of fencing, it will separate two incompatible uses, it's pedestrian traffic and also commercial and industrial traffic that takes place there at the marine terminal. Yeah, that's kind of our view of the project in a nutshell. Questions?
Not right at the moment, thank you.
Okay, great.
So I will pull up the staff report. We can go over the original proposed conditions and compare them, and then probably look at the port's proposed revised conditions, and then the staff's revised language based off of the port's comments. So here is the original list of recommendations that are based upon the application of findings of fact and conclusions of the staff report. The staff recommends the planning commission approve the shoreline substantial development permit subject to the following conditions of approval. "The port shall provide and submit an alternative public access improvement plan for review and approval by the planning department to include but not be limited to provisions for wayfinding and improvements to the pedestrian link between Commercial Avenue and Gueimas Channel at N Avenue Beach." Apologize for not able to pronounce the park's official name. "Improvements to the pedestrian connection to the N Avenue Beach should include items such as trees, street trees, pedestrian scale lighting, public art, et cetera." Recommendation number two, "The required alternative public access plan shall be submitted to the planning department prior to subject project completion and shall be installed within one year of plan approval." Recommendation number three, "The port shall obtain a fence permit for the proposed rolling gate at Second Street as well as the additional chain link fencing along the shoreline. Permit application shall show the fence and gate designed to preserve visual access down Second Street to the shoreline and shall be constructed to meet standards of Anacortes Municipal Code 19.66.040." Recommendation number four, "The port shall obtain construction permits for the street improvements and stormwater facility, shall comply with all applicable codes, manuals, and standards, and shall be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Engineering Division." Recommendation number five, "The port and the subject project shall comply with all applicable state requirements regarding preservation of archaeological and historic resources, including provisions to stop work and notify the appropriate agencies should protected resources be uncovered during excavation." Number six, "Removal of or relocation of all discarded materials, including concrete blocks, in upland areas beyond the fenced enclosure must be complete prior to the completion of the subject project." Number seven, "The scope of the project shall not exceed that as set out in the shoreline permit application and shall be valid only for the improvements described within the application materials, except as modified by this decision or other jurisdictional agencies. This permit does not include review or approval of any use." Number eight, "All applicable permits, local, state, and federal, shall be secured before any construction activities begin on-site and copies provided to the City of Anacortes Planning Committee and Economic Development Department. This includes a local City of Anacortes flood permit, flood development permit." Number nine, "The applicant/landowner shall comply with federal statutes, including but not limited to Endangered Species Act, Clean Water Act, Marine Mammal Protection Act, and other federal statutes." The project shall comply with all applicable, sorry, number 10, "The project shall comply with all applicable shoreline master program regulations, including but not limited to those listed in the body of the staff report." And number 11, "Development shall comply with Anacortes Municipal Code 18.16.130, regulating the time limit for shoreline permits." And that's just a straight copy from code. Nothing unique to this project was added to those 9.1 and 9.2. Just talks about the permit timelines for any shoreline substantial development permit. So if we go back up to recommendation number one and two, the point of number one is that in the shoreline master program, it mentions when a public agency or a project does propose to cut off, remove public access to a shoreline area, that that may be something that can be permitted if an acceptable alternative public access plan was agreed upon by the city. So that language is just coming from the SMP. There was some confusion that the port was potentially interpreting that, or maybe the planning commissioners or the public were interpreting that, as to the city requiring the port to modify or amend an existing plan, which was in the list of exhibits, the Integrated Approach Plan, that the port created in 2003 and the city adopted by reference in the shoreline master program.
So which document are you showing on the screen right now?
Just the original staff report, not the final recommendations.
Okay.
Just, I'm trying to build up the backstory to then move on to the revisions and connecting the dots there, so, yeah. I'm glad you pointed that out, though, just to confirm, this is the original recommendations, and they have been revised.
A quick question, then. Are there any changes or issues with number three to number nine?
No, there were no changes...
Number three to the end of the list?
Correct. The port and nor did city staff recommend or revise three through the end, just one and two.
And do the commissioners have any issues or concerns about any of those items?
Just a quick question. I thought I went through, I thought number five on the recommended is new.
So we have, let me pull, I can pull up, we haven't looked at the revised ones yet. So you're saying in the revised...
Yeah.
Number five is new?
Number five, and, yes, I think so.
It's at least a little different.
Okay, so let's leave the new list then and make sure that we can focus on the ones where there are issues and dispose of the others at the present time.
So to first address Commissioner Martin's question about the revised recommendations, number five, "The port shall obtain construction permits for the street improvements and stormwater facility, shall comply with all applicable codes, manuals, and standards, and shall be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Engineering Division." That is in reference to the original recommendation number four. Don't believe any words were changed.
So I think what you did was there's a new number three that pushed everything down?
Right, yes. So the revisions edited...
There's going to be one, two, and three.
Yes, thank you for asking, clarifying. So now we can go through the revised recommendations. And this is, again, staff's proposal. So if we recall, number, the original number one addressed an alternative public access improvement plan, be provided and submitted to the planning department for review and approval, and to include but not be limited to wayfinding and improvements to the pedestrian link between Commercial Avenue and the Gueimas Channel at N Avenue Beach. "Improvements to the pedestrian connection should include items such as street trees, pedestrian scale lighting, public art, et cetera." So the revised recommendation number one, "The port shall produce and submit a Phase One design proposal of the N Avenue Beach connection, referenced in the Port of Anacortes' Integrated Approach to Marine Public Access, October 2003, and adopted by reference in the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program for review and approval by the Planning Committee and Economic Development Department, to include but not be limited to provisions for wayfinding and improvements to the pedestrian link between Commercial Avenue and Gueimas Channel at N Avenue Beach. Considerations for improvement to the pedestrian connection should include items such as landscaping and an aesthetic treatment to existing port-owned privacy fencing along Third Street adjacent to the public sidewalk. By way of additional landscaping, art installations, or a similar proposed effect approved by the PCED department." So the intent of rewording this condition is in part to the port's requested revision that it could have sounded like we were asking for them to create a new plan, and that was not the intent. The intent was just to do a section of that plan, and here we have called that Phase One now. So the, again, the overall requirement of wayfinding and pedestrian improvements have not changed. We just clarified that that is due to the fact that we have an existing plan, the port, along with the city and the public, created in '03, and we are using that. And again, this is in regards to the Curtis Wharf improvement area and closing off public access to the west end of Second Street.
Just to clarify, then, this is referencing a condition that was already adopted in the Anacortes Shoreline Master Plan?
I don't know if it was a condition. It was adopted by...
No, this condition is referencing the plan that was already adopted in the shoreline master plan.
Correct, it was adopted, yes, adopted by reference.
So you're recommending a condition consistent with the shoreline master plan?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions regarding number one? The revised recommendation number two, that per condition of approval number one, "The required Phase One plan of N Avenue Beach connection shall be submitted to the Planning Committee and Economic Development Department prior to subject project completion and shall be installed within one year of the plan approval." So the original recommendation had the same timelines, and we just edited the terminology. Took out the alternative public access plan and referenced the Integrated Approach Plan and Avenue Beach Connection.
I guess I just want to clarify on that also, since we're referencing an already existing plan, what has to be submitted, then? Hasn't that already been done, basically?
So the, no, well, the plan showed an intent and, you know, master plan kind of image, but it wasn't engineered, it didn't have, you know, construction-level details. And the Integrated Approach to Marine Public Access, it also was embedded with language that, you know, allowed some flexibility in that plan. It didn't have to be exactly the illustration that they provided. So we would just need to know what the, you know, details were, and then have them at a construction level to permit.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then moving to revised recommendation number three, "The port shall produce and submit the complete N Avenue Beach connection plan to the Planning Committee and Economic Development Department for review and permit approval prior to or concurrently with the establishment of a new or expanded use or development on Curtis Wharf, the Second Street right-of-way, excuse me, or within the port's adjacent Quiet Cove Lay Down Lot, and that's the lot immediately to the south, or within five years of subject project completion, whichever is sooner." This one is probably the most, you know, brand-new, like, compared to the original recommendations, this one wasn't really illustrated. And it is in response to the port's clarification that the Avenue Beach Connection exists, and so I am including it here as recognizing that, yes, that plan exists, it was adopted to the SMP, and we expect that plan to be fulfilled. Now, I think it's important to see the port's request to modify conditions letter. This was in your packet and published in the agenda online for the public. If we move to the recommended condition number one in the staff report, the port recommends that "The port shall provide and submit an alternative public access improvement plan for review and approval by the planning department to include but not be limited to," I'm sorry, this is my, that's the original, don't mean to confuse you. I was just going to repeat what we already went over. Here now, at the top of the screen, is the port's proposed revised condition number one. "The port shall provide wayfinder signage to the..." for review and approval by the planning department to include but not be limited to, I'm sorry, this is my, that's the original, don't mean to confuse you. I was just going to repeat what we already went over. Here now, at the top of the screen, is the port's proposed revised condition number one. The port shall provide wayfinder signage to the pedestrian link between Commercial Avenue and Gwimus Channel at N Avenue Beach, consistent with the requirements in the right-of-way use agreement, Second Street, from O Avenue to Shoreline, Skagit County Auditor File Number 202206240050. The reasoning for the change, it is unclear in the recommended condition if the requirement that the port submit an alternative public access improvement plan means that the port must amend the public access plan identified in the Port of Anacortes Integrated Approach to Marine Public Access, October 2003, which is adopted by reference in the city's SMP. This request is problematic because it could be interpreted as a requirement for the port to amend or alter an adopted planning document within SMP. In addition, and perhaps more important, with the respect to the project under review, the project does not propose a new industrial use or development or otherwise trigger the development regulations or requirements in SMP to improve an existing alternative access to N Avenue Beach. So to their point of possible confusion of amending an already-adopted plan, that was the main intent of the revised condition number one is to recognize that we see that as required, and that it is a phased approach at this point, partly due in their, partly due to the scale of their proposal. We realize that the development under this current plan does not include expansion of use or a development of a new building, and so the Phase One was intent to be scaled to the size of this current permit application. And then the staff's recommended condition that a second phase to complete the entire plan be within five years or at time of a new development or an expansion of a use or a new use. If there's any questions, I just thought I'd pause and see if I was able to articulate that well enough for he to understand. Please go ahead.
Yes, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Schermetzler. I'm one of the attorneys for the Port of Anacortes, and I just wanted to chime in here and speak on behalf of the port. First acknowledge and thank the city for taking a look at their conditions and revising them and addressing that potential confusion. But I do want to take a moment just to talk about a few other pieces specific to conditions one, two, and three in the revised recommended conditions. I think first and foremost pointed out in the letter, I, the port's position is that the, the alternative access requirements in the SMP aren't triggered by this project. Really, all this project is, as Kevin from the port staff mentioned, was that it's a repaving of a gravel roadway. So it's not really an industrial use proposed in that location. The location is already under industrial use, and this is just a repaving project. It's going to provide safety improvements and provide stormwater improvements to this area. It's not going to change, change the use. I think along those same lines is with respect to whether this permit itself restricts the access, and I think it's important for the commission to understand that the access to this right-of-way and the water through the project area was already restricted by the city and port ILA. So it's not this project that is actually cutting off the access. The access is already restricted per that existing ILA. So again, it doesn't really trigger these requirements in the SMP to provide an alternative access as conditions one, two, and three in the recommended revised conditions suggest. You know, I think it's also important, I think, to note that part of the area that, at least the original conditions referred to extending all the way to, to Commercial Avenue, a lot of that area and the street improvement area is actually outside of the shoreline jurisdiction. You know, as the planning commission is likely aware, the shoreline jurisdiction is 200 feet from ordinary high water, and this is essentially a condition outside of the jurisdiction of the shoreline management program, which I think is problematic in different respects as well. And I think lastly, the revised conditions, while, you know, there are some improvements over the original conditions, I think is still, you know, maybe to borrow a term from contract law, an agreement to agree, you know, we have a condition in a shoreline permit here that says the city and the port are going to work out this other plan, and the city's going to approve this other plan for, for access, kind of as part of this shoreline permit. And I guess what is unclear to me, and I think is, you know, abnormal in a shoreline permit, at least in my experience, is that you have this ongoing review and approval authority from the city now being delegated away from the planning commission, the approval entity on the, on the shoreline substantial development permit here to city staff with respect to this access. You know, I don't think that's appropriate. I think it's problematic if, if the city and the port have a disagreement about what that, you know, stretch of access needs to be improved, what, what art, what landscaping, what other lighting and improvements need to go in there. If there's a disagreement, the port's appeal rights are a bit unknown because it's outside of this shoreline permit, which was already, would have been issued, and, and that appeal period would have, would have ended, and then you have this kind of rogue administrative approval that's tied to the shoreline permit. I just, I think that's abnormal and problematic here. It's more appropriate to have kind of a clear-cut condition. I think the port's position here is, is that with respect to the access issues, that was all addressed in that original ILA. That's a done deal between the city and the port. You know, if these kind of alternative access issues, you know, improving Commercial Street to the water was something important at the, to the city at that time, it should have been really included in that ILA negotiations, not, you know, in a subsequent development permit like happening here. So I guess the, you know, to sum up, the port's position here is we'd like the commission to, to adopt the conditions that were proposed in the port's letter or some variation of that and strike the, the conditions that are in the revised conditions proposed, one, two, and three. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
So you don't want the revised recommendations approved?
Well, I think the, you know, the port's position is the, the revisions aren't, aren't addressing all of the issues that, that the port originally pointed out in, in our comment letter back at the end of May, May 30th. You know, the, the issue of alternative access from Commercial Avenue along Third Street, you know, that, that should have been addressed in the ILA if the city wanted to, you know, kind of include those requirements with this alternative plan. You know, the cities, the port's not saying it won't participate in those street improvements as the rest of, you know, this area develops. But with this specific shoreline permit, which is really just a resurfacing of a gravelled section of Second Street, these conditions seem outside of the scope of that permit, potentially outside of the jurisdiction of the shoreline if you're extending all the way to Commercial Avenue, and, and, you know, not in line with the, the city's existing ILA agreement that, that was previously negotiated with respect to the, the Second Street right-of-way.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? None being heard. Thank you, sir, for your feedback and your input. We, commissioners may have a couple of clarifying questions for the staff. The fence, the proposed fencing does change the public access at the end of Second, does it not?
So one thing to point out is the use agreement was not development, and I put that in quotations. The Shoreline Master Program has a specific definition of what development is and what substantial development is, and those thresholds are then what has a project be subject to the policies, goals, and regulations of the SMP. So the fencing, the substantial development definition, and it was originally stated in the PowerPoint presentation, but it includes the material that a substantial development is any development that materially interferes with the normal public use of the water or shorelines of the state.
Thank you. And am I correct in assuming that that fence is within 200 feet of the waterline?
Yes, and I can pull up the PowerPoint image again.
And finally, the, as you just, as I just heard you say, and make sure I'm correct here, that this does basically trigger an alternate plan for, for public access?
Yes. So both in the SMP and also noted in the use agreement in recitals and background 3.4, the city's shoreline management plan, the SMP, encourages the development of alternative public access plans where public safety is compromised by water-dependent transportation, shipping, and manufacturing uses in proximity to deep shipper berths. The port had created that plan. It's the one referenced from 2003.
And the conditions, as they're written by the, in the revised staff report, are you confident that those conform to shoreline management requirements for alternate access?
Yes. Commissioner?
Would there still be access via, there is existing access already at Third Street?
Yes. So the Second Street access would be completely unusable by public, whether vehicle or pedestrian. And then the alternative plan is, if we look at the image in the bottom right-hand corner, it is one block to the south, which then connects to the, the primary beach access where there's parking spaces and a garbage can and signs.
That exists already?
I'm sorry, which part?
The access at Third Street exists already?
Yes.
And then you mentioned the thresholds for the, the master program?
For the substantial development.
So what's, what's the threshold?
So the total cost or fair market value exceeds $8,504. So there's a, there's a state code that first established what substantial development is, and then that dollar amount gets adjusted, I think, every five years. So the $8,504 is current market value. So any project that exceeds that, or-
That's considered significant?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Or the, a development that materially interferes with the normal public use of the water or shorelines of the state. Those are the two things that are defined as substantial development.
Okay, so just to, just to summarize, our findings thus far are that the access would be shut off, that it's within the shoreline area, it does require an alternate plan, and there is a plan already in place, and your recommendations are to follow that plan?
Correct.
That's all the questions I have. Do any other commissioners have questions or items? Okay, I guess we'll, we'll-
Maybe close the hearing? Our public hearing?
I don't have the wording directly in front of me, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of hands up online.
Mr. Chair? I think I have it.
Dr. Martin?
I move that we approve the city's revised recommendations dated 6/6/23, numbers one through 12, as written.
Taking the motion?
Okay, any discussion?
So we just need to be clear, did we close the public hearing?
That was closed prior to the-
It was.
-discussion with the staff.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure that that point was taken care of. So at this point, it's probably too late for people with their hands up on the audience to weigh in.
We did close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? Any discussion? Shall we take the roll, please?
Commissioner McCollum.
Can I have steam? Or is it just the president? Can I have steam? I'll abstain.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoman?
Yes.
Commissioner Duretsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries. Is there any further business before the commission? None being noted, we will adjourn the meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission from June 14th, 2023. Thank you all.